And planning board meeting. Thank you for hitting record. I'm gonna do a roll call real quick, which I think will confirm what board members are present and what board members are not. So I'll go ahead and go down the list. If you're here, please unmute yourself and say aye, because I can't for some reason see the gallery view is not showing me everybody. Um, okay, so firstly of Jonathan.
Here.
Thank you. Stacy.
Here.
Taya.
Here.
Shannon.
Present.
Jim Barrett.
Here.
Tori. I'm not hearing. He might be a couple of minutes late, actually. He was driving in downtown Denver now that I think about it. And Misha.
Here.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Glad you could call in. Okay, we will hopefully hear from Tori here shortly. The first thing on the agenda is approval of the the June minutes. However, we don't have the June minutes. So Jonathan, can you let us know when we can expect the June minutes and then we can agenda those at that time?
Yeah, I can finish this this week.
Perfect. We'll put as soon as we get them, we'll put them on the next agenda. Um, there was no meeting in July. So we can move into public comments. The public comments we're going to take first are general public comments, not comments on agenda items. You will all have an opportunity to comment on specific agenda items this evening, which we have our public. And if you wouldn't mind muting if you are not me. I'm gonna mute you. Okay, I'm gonna mute you too. Um, thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna open up to public comment. Please make your comment on something that the planning board has jurisdiction over. This is general public comment. Please state your full name and your address. And if you'd like to make comment, you can go ahead and raise your hand or just unmute yourself. Does anyone have any general public comment for the planning board at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone's hands. Can you see somebody?
Debbie.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, would you like to go ahead and state your full name and address, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Debbie Van Blercom, 1178 US Highway Tim West. I am, uh, Livingston. And is that all you wanted to know first?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I sit in the middle of all this property. PFL is in my backyard. And now FedEx.
Excuse me, Debbie, that's a comment that will be during the public hearing. This is just for general public comments. We're gonna get to the.
And is that later on in the meeting then?
Yep, first, we're gonna get a staff report, then we'll hear from Mr. Fields and his associates, and then we'll open public comment to this agenda item.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'll go back. I'll go back to mute.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any general public comment that is not about the public hearing this evening? And thank you guys, if you can see, for some reason, I'm having some trouble. I'm gonna go one more time for public comment. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close general public comment, and we're gonna open it up to the public hearing. First, we're gonna hear from Mr. Woodhall for the staff report, and then we'll hear from Mr. Fields and his associates about the project. Then we'll open it up to public comment, and then the board will have some discussion. So Mr. Woodhall, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a staff report for the Mountain View subdivision. Property owned by Livingston West LLC and printingforless.com Inc. Are described as parcels one A of certificate of survey number twenty seven forty eight and parcel two A certificate of survey number twenty six twenty one. And located on the west end of Livingston near Highway ten west and the on-ramp to Interstate ninety. They're proposing to divide this property into thirty nine lots. The property is and was annexed in two thousand and four, is owned highway commercial, and currently contains the PFL facility and a new FedEx ground building. As the board is familiar with, there are a set of categories for findings that must be made in order to determine the suitability of a subdivision. They are dictated by Montana code and they are as follows. Number one is the effect on agriculture. First question is, would the subdivision remove agricultural or timberlands with significant existing or potential production capacity? Staff answer here was no. Number two, would the subdivision remove from production agricultural lands that are critical to the area's agricultural operations? Again, staff answer is no. Number three, would the subdivision create significant conflict with nearby agricultural operations? For example, creating problems for moving livestock, operating farm machinery, maintaining water supplies, controlling weeds, applying pesticides, or would the subdivision generate nuisance complaints due to nearby agricultural operations? Staff answer was no, there are no intensive agricultural activities in the immediate area. And number four, how would the subdivision affect the value of nearby agricultural lands? Staff's written answer is not applicable, and it refers back to the last answer, no substantial agricultural activity in the area. Category number two is the effect on agricultural water users facilities. The question here is, would the subdivision create a significant conflict with agricultural water users facilities? Creating problems for operating or maintaining irrigation systems, creating nuisance complaints due to safety concerns, noise, et cetera. Staff answer was no, no ag water user facilities exist on the subject property. Third category is the effect on local services. Number one, what additional or expanded public services and facilities would be demanded to serve this subdivision? Staff answers that the city will have to provide water, sewer, garbage collection, police, fire, and EMS services. What condition, what additional cost would result for service such as streets, law enforcement, parks, fire protection, water, sewer, and solid waste, schools and busing, including additional personnel, equipment, construction, and maintenance costs? Staff answer here is that the cost of police and fire services will slowly increase as the population increases. The amount attributable attributable to this development is integrated into the city's impact fee schedule. Next question is, who would bear these costs? Staff answer is taxes on new construction will go to the city's general fund, and impact fees will be charged at the time building permits are issued. Can the service providers meet the additional costs given legal and other constraints? Staff answer is that the city's impact fees are designed to offset the increases in costs, and were updated in two thousand and twenty one. Question number two, would the subdivision allow existing services through expanded use to operate more efficiently or make the installation or improvement of services feasible? Staff answer here was somewhat. The extension of water and sewer mains to the edge of the Highway ten right of way would accommodate future service to additional annexed property on the other side of the highway. Three, what are the present tax revenues received from the undivided land by the county school and city? The answer is the current tax bill on the vacant subdivision is six thousand five hundred forty eight dollars and seventeen cents. Number four. What would be the approximate revenues received by each of the above taxing authorities when the subdivision is approved and built upon? Staff's estimate is that that number is approximately three hundred thousand dollars divided by the three taxing entities. Next question, would new taxes generated from the subdivision cover additional public costs? Staff answer is that the fact that this development is zoned highway commercial with the potential for both higher density residential buildings as well as commercial uses makes it more likely that the property's tax revenue generated will cover the additional public costs. Impact fees will apply to this development, and the property will also be included into our street and light maintenance districts. And the last question in this category is, would any special improvement districts be created which would obligate the city financially or administratively? And the answer is no. Next category is the effect on the natural environment. How would the subdivision affect surface and groundwater, soils, slopes, vegetations, historical or archaeological features, and visual features within the subdivision or on adjacent lands? First question in this category is, would any stream banks be altered, streams rechanneled, or any surface water contaminated from runoff carrying sedimentation or other pollution? Staff answer here was no. Would groundwater supplies likely be contaminated or depleted as a result of this subdivision? Again, the staff answer was no. Would construction of streets or building sites result in excessive cuts and fills on on steep slopes or cause erosion on unstable soils? Staff answer is no. Would significant vegetation be removed causing soil erosion or banking stability? Staff answer is no, proper construction techniques and following DEQ drainage regulations for the city's design standards would avoid any erosion problems. Would significant historical or archaeological features be damaged, destroyed, or destroyed by this subdivision? No known historic or or archaeological resources exist on this property, and the staff did provide a letter from the state historic preservation office to that effect. Would the subdivision be subject to natural hazards such as flooding, rocks, snow, or landslides, high winds, severe wildfires, or difficulties such as shallow bedrock, high water table, unstable or expansive soils, or excessive slopes? Staff's answer here is that none of these hazards are known, and none have been identified. Next category is the effect on wildlife and wildlife habitat. How would the subdivision affect critical wildlife areas such as big game wintering range, migration routes, nesting areas, wetlands, or other important habitat? Staff answers this subdivision is not located within critical wildlife habitat. And as you've seen through the application materials, we know that there are wetlands on this property that have been previously mapped and set aside. How would pets or human activity affect wildlife? Staff answers that human wildlife interaction is expected to be minimal at this location, and there's also input in your materials from fish, wildlife, and parks who give some specifics about what species do frequent the area. Number six, effect on public health and safety. Would the subdivision be subject to hazardous conditions due to high voltage lines, airports, highways, railroads, high pressure gas lines, or adjacent industrial uses? Staff answer here is no, staff does not view these hazards even though there is a railroad and a highway adjacent as any more severe than other locations in the city of Livingston. Number two, what existing uses may be subject to complaints from residents of this subdivision? And again, none have been identified. Number three, what public health or safety hazards such as dangerous traffic or fire conditions would be created by this subdivision? And staff has not identified any such hazards. So to the staff recommendation, based on these findings and after reviewing the application in light of the city's growth policy, the planning department recommends that the city planning board recommend conditional approval of this subdivision. The suggested conditions follow. Number one, subdivider will sign a waiver of protest of SID for all lots within this subdivision. The waiver will apply to a future project to create pedestrian bicycle connectivity from the subdivision to the existing existing trails to the city's existing trail system. Number two, all infrastructure will comply with the city of Livingston's public work design standards and specifications policy. Number three, all the water main loop from Antelope Drive to PFL Way will be in place prior to final approval of phase one. Number four, final approval of the subdivision will require proof of compliance with Montana Department of Transportation conditions in regard to any improvements to Highway ten. Number five, street lights will be required within this development. Type and spacing will be per existing city specification. Number six, stormwater design will meet all applicable DEQ standards. Number seven, a Montana licensed engineer or his supervised representative will be required to be on site during utility construction. Number eight, any reimbursement, excuse me, any utility reimbursement plan must be submitted to and approved by the city prior to the beginning of construction. Number nine, the subdivider will be responsible for all required street signing to include traffic control signs as well as street name signs. All signs will be built and installed according to city specifications. Painting of curbs at fire hydrants will also be required. Number ten, any improvements agreements for deferred infrastructure need to be reviewed and approved by the city prior to the beginning of construction. Number eleven, the subdivider will, in consultation with the county extension office, prepare an obnoxious weed plan to mitigate the spread of weeds to adjacent properties. Proof of compliance with this plan will be required in order to gain final approval. And number twelve, all outdoor lighting in this development will be required to be night sky friendly per city ordinance. That is the staff report, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Woodhall. Um, I think we should move on to the presentation from Mr. Fields, and then I'll open it up to board questions for both Jim and Mr. Fields. Um, Mr. Fields, are you representing the project this evening?
Uh, I am here representing Livingston West, which is most of the acreage in the project. And having been the founder of PFL, I know the history, and that's all I'm really gonna talk about is sort of how we got to where we are. And then Suzie Lawlich and Dave Hawkins and Nick Runyon, PFL's president or CEO are also on, if there's anything additional that either the board or public comments that need to be responded to. How's that sound?
That sounds great. Go go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Um, I thank you very much, Madam Chairperson, for the being on and for taking your time and the whole planning board. I've never been to a Livingston planning board meeting before, so this is very fun and interesting. Uh, back in two thousand and four, PFL was in the former Livingston Creamery at Geyser and B, and when we were looking for a new home, we ended up with this property on the west end of town. And we worked with the city to annex us into the city. So we got annexed in about eighteen seventeen years ago. And we could have just stayed in the county. Obviously, this is a annex that is has some county land between us and the rest of the city and beyond septic and well, but we decided not to. And and in talking to the city at the time, if they indicated that part of their long-term plan was to have the city annex the property it all the way out to across Highway ten from us, and then have the infrastructure cross under Highway ten and then go to the north under the tracks so they could form a loop and eventually end up with the water being gravity fed and kind of a self-healing loop. And we decided to do that just thinking that that would be the responsible thing to do, and that that would enable other development out on the west end. And we were cognizant way back then that the west end is a gateway, one of the three, I guess, gateways to the city. And we thought as citizens, we should do our best to make it nice and to support the infrastructure, et cetera. So we put, it ended up being a twelve inch water and ten inch sewer, and PFL uses very little water in the manufacturing process. So we were a little stunned at how big those mains were, but to fulfill the purpose of the long-term infrastructure, that's what we had to do. In today's dollars, it cost about two million bucks. But what it did was enable this project today that we're here talking about. And we we learned that that this was part of the city's infrastructure and how they wanted to go. And that's kind of, if you want to know like how we ended up here, that's it. The other thing is that Livingston West owns the fifty-two acres that surround PFL's twenty acres that you've seen in the maps. And, um, you know, we we have never sold off any of this land or gone through the subdivision process because we didn't have the money to put in the infrastructure that would be required to service numerous lots. Fortunately, FedEx approached us at the end of last year, and in January, they closed on buying six and a half acres, which were addressable. There was already three lots, so we were able to sell that one lot, but now in order for either PFL or Livingston West to sell any more lots, we have to go through the major subdivision process. So that's what kind of drove the timing of it. And the reason it works now is because FedEx was required as part of the development to put in about a thousand feet of road meeting city standards and twenty-two hundred feet of sewer and water and about a thousand feet of stormwater, including retention ponds and eighteen inch pipe, et cetera. So the Livingston West, which I'm the managing member of, sunk almost all of the proceeds of the sale to FedEx back into contributing to the infrastructure to make the whole thing possible. And so that's just to sort of explain the history and the timing. This loop, which this project is contributing substantially to, has been contemplated for a long time. The other thing I just wanted to say is, in anticipation of this, I took a look at the new growth policy enacted last year, and I was really happy to see that of on page ten, there's four community challenges is what they're called, identified. And this project meets three of them: housing affordability, jobability, job availability, and population growth. Uh, and I, you know, those are things that are important. Uh, you all got a copy of the letter from the CFO, I think it is, of Livingston Healthcare, that being able to provide, you know, housing, workforce housing is an important objective of theirs. I know it is also for PFLs. Uh, we've both had the unfortunate circumstance of trying to hire people and having them look at the housing prices and say, not only are they high, there's nothing available. Um, the other thing I'd just like to highlight is that there's already, I consider this to be kind of infill, because there's already nineteen point seven acres now developed in the total area shown on the maps, and we're preserving as part of the remainder nineteen acres of open space, which is substantially more than the the required amount of open space. Includes that wetland, which I consider to be a really nice amenity. Um, we are not master planning this because I'm not a developer and and don't don't want to be the one doing that. I think the market will decide. We've been told by developers who's look who have looked at it that the acreage that PFL is submitting into this subdivision and the southeast acreage of the Livingston Westland, well, some of which is really nice and flat, and it's shielded from the highway noise and the wind by the hill, by the topography, would be really good for multifamily residential. I don't think anybody's gonna build a McMansion in that location, but it certainly is better than a lot of multifamily locations if you get out to Belgrade and even Bozeman, and that the areas fronting Highway ten because of their visibility to the traffic there would be good for commercial, and we don't know what that commercial will be. There used to be a gas station on the property right around the curve. And when we bought it all those years ago, we had to tear it up, pull out the tanks, and test the soil. And it was a big surprise to everybody, but when we did the environmental archaeological surveys of the land, we found that might that be a good gas station? Yeah, it's not near big enough for a truck stop, so nobody needs to worry about another truck stop on this end of town. And the last thing I'll say is, I just, you know, think that this is a great opportunity to finally make the West Gate something nice and pretty. And that while if I sell a lot, unless I put covenants on it, I won't be able to control exactly what's done. And and we we would control exactly what's done if, you know, somebody wanted to put in something bad. But that every project will need to go through the entire review process with the city. So it isn't that once we sell somebody a lot, they can just do whatever they want. It's gonna go through the pretty rigorous process, and having been on behalf of PFL through the city planning review process twice, once in, I guess it was oh five, and once about four or five years ago for our big warehouse annex. It's thorough, and you know, we we survived it, and we met the architectural standards and setbacks and all that other stuff. And so I'm confident that this is gonna be the first step towards a really long-term benefit for the city of Livingston and Park County. And it just came to me, I might as well proactively address something. If anyone makes the argument that oh, this will take away from downtown, I would completely disagree. I believe that having a nice Western gateway will actually draw people in. I sort of foresee a a big sign of some sort that says explore Livingston. We've got three world-class museums and thirteen art galleries and you know, dining is seen on the Anthony Bourdain show or whatever, you know, it might be. So that people would, instead of just stopping, go ahead and head into town, and I think that it will be a draw more than hopping off at exit three thirty-three, getting some McDonald's and gas and heading south. So I actually believe that this will help the downtown Livingston area rather than detract from it. So I'll stop right there and turn it back over to you. Jesse.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, let's see, I'm gonna open it up to board questions, and your colleagues were here just for questions. They didn't want to present anything. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to planning board comments, or I'm sorry, questions for Mr. Fields and his associates and Mr. Woodhall for a staff report. And I'm gonna does anybody have any questions?
Jesse, can you hear me? I can't figure out how to raise my hand. This is Tori.
I can hear you. You're a little bit garbled, but we can hear you.
Maybe I will try calling in and I'll give the floor to somebody else.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. Um, yeah, Stacy.
Um, I had a question on a couple of things. Just logistically, when I look at the plat, I'm concerned about highway access on that exterior portion of them. So I don't know what the rules are for lots. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten to get onto Highway ten. You know, is that is that just open access? Or is that gonna be blocked off so they can't get people, you know, whatever is built there has to go into a designated street to get access to it?
Yeah, the highway.
I was just gonna ask Stacy, which lots are you talking about, three, four, and five?
Three, four, five, all the ones that that are up against Highway ten.
Yeah, they the they will go on either PFL Way for lots three, four, and five, or Antelope Drive. The small portion of Antelope Drive just south of three, four, and five exists. It's already got sewer, water. What do you call it? Fire hydrants, et cetera. So it's ready to go, but the anybody pulling out of there, let's say there was a restaurant on lot three or four or five, they would pull onto Antelope. or four or five, they would pull onto Antelope Drive, which exists. They would either turn left and go off to PFL where you see employees coming out every day. Or they would go right onto the soon to be completed extension of Antelope Drive and then turn right on that West End Road. So that's where DOT wanted that egress to be because the rest of West End Road, including the DOT site for all their big trucks is directly across from that. And so they, they wanted the idea of a four-way rather than here's a driveway, here's a driveway, here's a driveway. So I believe from, from discussions with DOT, there is no way they're going to let any of those other lots pop their own little driveway onto Highway.
Okay.
Because they would all have to have their own individual egress permit and the state won't allow for it along there. We had to go through a long process just to get this second access and get them to approve it.
Okay, I just didn't see any written letters stating that information. And so it was an ambiguous. Yeah, I just didn't know what, what it was because I, again, I think it's the same thing. It would, it would create havoc if everybody kind of was able to go out anywhere. That was my one question on that. Andrew, you mentioned about covenants. The possibility, we've all seen the, the warehouses that have been built over on the outskirts of Bozeman. And the different warehouses are all different styles and designs. If you had any kind of covenants put up, would you then have the ability to control, this is beyond what the city requires for their design review. This is what something is made out of or design purposes architecturally. Is that what your covenants could potentially cover?
They, they could. The thing that I would say about that is, you know, by, by definition, a gas station convenience store looks very different from a hotel, which looks very different from, say, somebody wants to build a wood shop out here. And I, I, I think, and Jim can, or Shannon can jump in if they like. I, I think there are city standards about materials and what, what you can do and what you can't do. They may not be super proscriptive because, you know, housing is going to have a different sighting than a gas station presumably. Yeah.
I guess what I was referring to more was you were saying that you wanted it to look nice. And, you know, everybody's view of what looks nice is different. So once you sell a lot, your control over what's going on in that lot leaves your hands. Right?
It does.
So, so I just didn't know to what degree it was important to you to have any kind of overall view or vision for your entire, entire project, whether it's a residential apartment complex, a gas station, a mini warehouse, a large warehouse. That's all.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that I'm, I don't know necessarily an aesthetician or a community planner. We do have a community planner at Sanderson Stewart on the line with us. But I don't think it would ever go so far as to be like Aspen where anything new, everything looks exactly the same and.
And I'm not looking for that, but yeah.
And, and I'm not either. I mean, part of the charm, I've been here thirty-three years. Part of the charm of Livingston is it's got some variety. But a- as a seller and Nick perhaps can speak on behalf of PFL, which would probably be selling residential lots as a seller. It, it will come up, oh, what are you going to do? What are you going to build? And, you know, some, we're not going to have a car junkyard. You know, not going to have many storage. You know, anything like that, we want it to look nice. There's a limit to the amount of control that I, I would have over that.
Okay.
I, I will make a comment on that, Stacy. Nick Runyon, I'm the CEO of PFL. I think it's important to remember that we have and represent, and Suzie and Dave and I are representing over three hundred employees. The majority of which, you know, two hundred plus live and work in the Livingston area. So this is not a sell and then get out of town kind of thing. This is, we're going to continue to be neighbors. And the best position that you can be in is to choose your neighbors. So it's in our own best interest to make sure that this is good for the community.
I had just one other question. Since you all work out there, you know what the wind is like. Have you thought that there's any, any, any things that need to be done to accommodate the destructive power of wind, I guess?
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'll speak to that first before either Chris or Nick jump in. The, I can assure you that the engineers take full account of Livingston's wind. And I thought that the, the design for the warehouse that we've been in now for years was completely overbuilt. If you've ever been to France, the Eiffel Tower is quite a bit larger and the steel gauge is quite a bit smaller than what is in that warehouse. And they took into account snow load of the type of snow I've never seen here as well as wind. And on, I think it was November thirteenth of twenty twenty, the, remember when we had the, I think, hundred and thirteen mile an hour gusts? I walked back into that warehouse and it held steady. So I quit complaining about the engineers overbuilding it. And I actually gained a lot of faith that the engineers are going to require and spec out, this is what you need to do, given the wind load in that area. Chris from Sanderson Stewart, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
This is Chris Naumann. I'm a senior planner with Sanderson Stewart here in our Bozeman office. Yeah, I would just add that the International Building Code is updated regularly and the city of Livingston adopts those iterative codes as they come out. And it, it not only takes into account snow loads and wind, but, but, you know, seismic design specifications. And so all the modern buildings that would be constructed would certainly be similar to the warehouse Andrew's talking about and as good as any others in Livingston in terms of withstanding those natural elements. Thank you.
Have you had any problems with garbage? And, you know, my garbage can gets blown over every time there's a huge windstorm. So I just wondered if, if that was either a concern.
We haven't, we haven't in the eighteen years PFL's been located out there. You know, we've worked with the city on the garbage pickup. We've changed a few times from the blue bins to a dumpster to whatnot. I will say that when people at PFL toss something in, sometimes little scraps of paper, I mean, little thin scraps of paper get blown out. And usually a couple of times a year, we have the Boy Scouts come and we, as a fundraiser and as earning a badge, they pick it all up because we want to be good neighbors and not have stuff blowing around.
I'll yield for now. So Tori, I see is back on.
Tori, do you want to make a, ask a question?
Yeah, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for, for bearing with me here. So this, this question is for Jim. It looks to me, it looks to me like there are two elements of the proposal that would go against the subdivision regulation. So I'm wondering why we're not seeing here a variance request at the same time.
Which elements are those, Mr. Lyons?
Um, so from the subdivision regulations, it says the blocks must be wide enough to provide for two tiers of lots. So we're only seeing one tier of lots here in the subdivision proposal. And then it also, the subdivision regulation also requires alleys provided in residential subdivisions. So those are two, two elements that I'm seeing here that don't comport with the subdivision regulation. I'm wondering why we're not seeing a, a request for a variance.
Let me address those separately. The short answer about the two tiers of lots is I'm honestly not aware of that requirement. So if that is the case, you may be correct. The alleys is a different situation. I'm perfectly aware of that. And if you read the actual regulation very carefully, it says required in residential subdivisions and the preferred alternative in all others. And staff has determined that this is zoned highway commercial and therefore not a residential subdivision.
Okay, so because they're not specifying land use, they're, they're agnostic about land use, although we have heard from Mr. Field plans for residential development in this area. Because they haven't explicitly said that there will be residential uses, even though we're hearing that in the meeting. They're not required to provide alleys. That sounds a little suspect to me. That, that, that's my first, those are my first comments. I'll just leave it at that for now. It looks to me like this would require, would require a variance, which we're not seeing. And I'll, I'll just pass it off to my other colleagues for now.
I have a quick clarifying question, Tori and Jim. Tori, the first subdivision regulation you mentioned, could either you or Jim explain what that is? The not the, not the block and alley. I had that question earlier, but the first one.
I can just read the, read it verbatim from the subdivision regulation. It says, blocks must be wide enough to provide for two tiers of lots unless a narrower configuration is essential to provide separation of residential development from traffic arteries or to overcome specific disadvantages of topography. Again, we heard from Mr. Field that this is a remarkably flat lot. Specific disadvantages of topography, topography and orientation or unless the governing body approves a design consisting of irregularly shaped blocks indented by cul-de-sacs. So that's the full language from, from the subdivision regulation.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a, on the board have a question for?
I should, I should probably just note in response to Mr. Lyons, thank you for those comments. The flat portion is in the lower right, the southeast. There is some very hilly topography right along I ninety.
So Chair, may I?
Sure, Taya, go ahead.
This was actually kind of leads up to one of my concerns. I, I felt like that we didn't receive all the materials for this subdivision review. And in fact, one that jumped out to me was it was strange. We didn't see a topographical map and just a, a flat plat, which I think can be difficult then to determine the answer to some of our questions we might have. And then there were a number of appendices that we did not receive.
Would it be helpful at this point, Taya, to see a topographical map, do you think during this meeting? Or Mr. Woodhull, are there appendices that the planning board has not seen that should have in order to make the decision?
Yes, there are some appendices that the planning board was not provided. They are civil drawings dealing with utilities that are certainly not final at this stage. They never are with the preliminary plat. And they will need to be reworked through the public work standards and approved by Shannon's departments as well as DEQ before they can be accepted.
But even I think we were missing, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think I saw MDT's response to the inquiry letter.
Richard or Chris, can you, can you pull that up? The response came after the submission.
Right, I saw, I saw a letter in response then asking for further information, but then I didn't see MDT's response once that information was provided.
Madam, can I clarify?
If I can just add, it's, it's not just critical for the planning board to see this information, but it's critical for the public to have this information before decisions made as well. So just unloading information on the planning board in the, in a, in a meeting is not an appropriate process. And so I, I just, I just want to reiterate the fact, or Taya's point that this is information that we, that we, as well as the public, should be seeing before the planning board is making any kind of decisions. Because we, we, not only does the planning board need to be informed, the public needs to be informed. So the planning board is hearing an informed response also from the public. And that's, and we're not going to be able to provide that opportunity for the public this evening. That's my, that's my opinion.
I want to, Tori, I think it will be very hard to move forward without having all that information.
And Jesse, can you add one thing, please? All, all of the materials also were available for the public, just the, just the staff report and the agenda. So, and then we were also missing the wetland delineation report.
Thanks, planning board members. I was thinking the same thing. We did get some comment where the only piece of material that the public was able to see was the actual staff report. And I had questions about that. Mr. Woodhull, is it not appropriate for all of the documentation to be in a planning board agenda packet in a timely manner for not only the board to view, but the public as well? And if the public requests documentation, how quickly can the planning board turn that over to them?
Can you repeat the question, ma'am?
Yes, so in response to the other board members' concerns, I had the same. I was curious if we had all the documentation. And in a comment that came in, and I might preface really quickly for the, for the public and the board, public comment cannot come directly to me. I am the chair of the planning board. However, I am not the one that receives sole public comment to send out to the planning board members. I simply don't have the capacity as a volunteer advisory board to the city commission person to, to be able to receive all the public comment and send it out in a timely manner. It really should go through faith at the city and/or Mr. Woodhull. So if you have public comment and you want it to go out to the planning board in a timely manner, please don't send it directly to me. It really needs to go to the city staff. Simply because I don't have the capacity in my own day to, to take all that public comment and send it back out. It really has to go through the correct chain. And with that, there was public comment that came to me today at like, you know, in the middle of a board meeting that I was sitting in that, that had said, I think we're missing a lot of information. We could only see the staff report. So I guess with that being said, Mr. Woodhull, is it important and required in your opinion that the public receive all the information that the planning board is receiving in a timely manner to be able to make appropriate public comment on these subdivision reviews?
Well, absolutely. There's no question that the public is entitled to all the information that is public domain. I think the disconnect is the fact that we have not traditionally put out a packet of information such as the city commission does and post it online. It appears that the board would like that to be done and the city can certainly make those changes. Yes, it's all public. Once the application is made and there's no excuse for someone not to be able to get it. That's an omission on my part. And I, I, there's no excuse and I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. We, so a lot of us were on the planning board through the growth policy review process and we had volumes of packets that was provided to both us, the, the board members and the public. And it was, I, I can't remember what the regulations are, but it was at least within ten days of the, the, the meeting. So I think that I guess maybe what we should discuss now is we have planning board members that don't feel that they have all the information this evening to make some decisions. we have planning board members that don't feel that they have all the information this evening to make some decisions. Is it, you know, our job this evening as this advisory board to the city commission is to make a recommendation on this subdivision review, and it sounds like we don't have all the information we need to make that decision this evening. And the public has not received all the information to be able to adequately comment on the subdivision review. So I guess what I'd like to maybe discuss with our board members is that should this be postponed to our next September meeting? I'm, I'm happy to.
Madam Chair? Yeah, this is, and I, I mean, I appreciate what Commissioner Lyons brought up. And to be honest with you, in my notes, how I was going to suggest dealing with the situation as far as the MDT approval would, would, I think it is under the planning board's purview to put additional conditions on, on this preliminary plat approval. And, and one of my recommendations would have been dependent on MDT approval of the traffic impact study. I have several others with stormwater, water sewer. But, you know, I certainly understand that there was missing information and more time is needed. And if the board is not comfortable covering all of those unknowns with additional conditions, then, then postponing or trying to do this in September certainly is, could, would be an option.
Thank you, Shannon. Any other board member comments?
I guess I, I would like to know specifically, I think, besides the wetland survey, what people had noted that was missing? How many things? Besides, and with appendices, appendices were missing? Just in general.
In my opinion, this proposal needs a, a variant, a request for variance. So that, that's a whole nother process that's not even here yet. So that's one. I, I believe Taya mentioned a topographic map so that we could understand how the proposed subdivision of lots fits in with the topography of the existing parcel. And I believe Jonathan might have mentioned some others. Those are the ones that I remember.
Jonathan, did you have one that you, wetland, what was it, a wetland, what?
It was the wetland delineation report. I don't think we received that. My opinion is that we don't, since we don't have all the information and the public wasn't properly notified, that I don't think that we should move forward today.
Any other board comments? I have a list going. I'll read it off here in a minute. But if, does anyone else have any, Jim or Misha? Do either of you have any information you feel was missing or any opinion on whether we should postpone?
I don't feel like we have the information and the time, especially with some of the comments that came in today. But I also had one other question, if I may, Madam Chair. Um, I think that Andrew kind of touched on it for a minute, but maybe Jim could speak a little bit more. If, if this is approved, when, since we don't really know what is going in and what the residential places will look like, will they come back before us again prior to them getting the approval to build whatever, you know, put in where, whatever they want to put in, or is we approve this, are, are we done with our part?
Madam Chair, I can answer that?
Yes, please.
Essentially, because it's zoned, what this application is for is for the arrangement of the property and the servicing of you, by utilities and the layout. Zoning covers the actual land use. So none of those, once the lots exist, the, the buildings have to meet the existing zoning. And that is the only review, and it is, it is a staff level review at that point.
So, Misha, did you have another question? Because I have, I just have an added question.
No, thank you. That, that answers my question.
So I have a question just for information, I guess. One of those lots, how, how much land does it take to, to build a warehouse, a, a general sized warehouse? In other words, would somebody want to come in and buy one lot or two lots to build a warehouse? Just, just to, and for perspective purposes?
My understanding is, you know, warehouses can be a variety of sizes. And it could go up to 2 million square feet for a very large Amazon distribution center. PFL's recent addition is 25 by 115. You can see it on the maps. So if somebody wanted to build a warehouse that size, it would take, you know, with parking and whatnot, it would take two or three of these lots.
Okay. And one of the other questions I had was just kind of in, once you pave things and you had put in a temporary holding for, holding area? That was in phase, phase one? Down at the, by your warehouse, I believe? That then is going to be removed later on in phase three? And I just wondered how you determined how many, how large that needed to be?
Chris, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Andrew. First, I'd also point out, Stacy, on your, on your first question, that just as a comparison for scale, that FedEx facility that's under construction right now, you know, is about six acres. And most of the lots proposed are between half an acre and, and, and an acre, give or take. And then to the size of something even smaller than PFL's facility, like the FedEx facility, would essentially require, in all real purposes, a lot bigger than it could be aggregated by purchasing multiple of the proposed lots. So I guess my point is, most of those future warehouse, potential future warehouse developments would be, you know, much smaller in footprint than the FedEx under construction and even the, the PFL expansion. So that hopefully helps get a sense of the potential scale. And then in terms of the sizing of the, the stormwater ponds, both the temporary one and the proposed permanent one. The, the temporary one is, was sized for the infrastructure that's, you know, the public infrastructure. These stormwater ponds collect and, and retain and, and do initial treatment to the stormwater generated from the street, the impervious surface of the street. Each private development is required to do their, their own storm water management on site. So the sizes of the temporary one and the permanent one were calculated according to standard engineering, civil engineering practices for the amount of impervious surface that is represented by the, the road for phase one and then the full build out of the road network for the permanent one. So those calculations are standardized and, you know, the storm reports are quite, quite detailed to come to those sizing determinations.
And I just had one other informational question. Out of the number of acres, the 18 acres that are in the wetlands, since it is a wetland, and you're not, you know, you don't walk in a wetland area, right? So how much of the 18 acres is actually usable as an open space recreational area?
I, I don't know. I'm very familiar with the property. I don't know a technical answer to that question. But throughout the course of the year, the only part that is, has standing water is, I don't know, I'd estimate about two acres at the north adjacent to Highway 10. And it's where you can see the geese from time to time nesting up by the road from that. But I, you know, 365 days a year, I can walk my dog all the way to the truck stop property line, all the way back, right through the middle of that.
So is that where the proposed, I was just trying to get a feel for where that proposed trail was? It's the bottom two thirds of the, where it says the upper 18 acres?
Yeah, that's, yeah, go ahead.
I'd say that trail, that trail is walkable in that location. But like Andrew said, that entire open space, I would agree with him, is walkable up to just the nearest portion of Highway 10 in that northeast corner for the majority of the year. Many of our employees walk out there every day.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was in the marshy area and had to be built up, or if it was able to be on flat land and you could, it would, it would be walkable now.
Well, and that southeast corner, that's all open space there also. And, you know, it's hilly, but everybody wanting, yeah, but I've been out there walking it quite a few times. And it's enjoyable to hike all over that area.
Yeah, I went and parked my car and looked, so. Okay. Oh. And one other question. Were all the power lines going to be buried, I'm assuming? I didn't quite read that anywhere, but I'm assuming they're all buried. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you have the floor?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'd like to just start talking about some of the positive things about this layout. And again, I've been meeting with Andrew and Chris and Richard for quite a long time. And I think I just want to point out some of the infrastructure that they have included on this that certainly is, is a benefit to our system. The looped road looping the water, so we do have an internal loop. And that was something that we suggested and they put in. While the West End Road isn't where my preference is, that's what MDT actually required, that location. They did extend water and sewer out to the end of West End Road and the Highway 10 intersection for if and when the Justin property, which is annexed into the city, ever develops. It also accommodates this future West End water loop that would have a connection on the north side of Highway 10 at that West End Road area. Really appreciate all of their stormwater improvements. I know there's been some challenges with Chris and his team to make that work. But this has storm drain inlets, retention ponds. One of my recommended conditions would be that the city does not have responsibility for maintaining those stormwater ponds. We, we certainly could maintain the inlets and the piping network under the street. But the, the maintenance of the ponds is, is a lot of work for the limited staff we have at Public Works. They're on board with the streetlight requirements from the city sidewalks for all these lots. So, and, and I, I actually, I don't have any issues with the lot layout. I, I feel like we can provide adequate garbage and street maintenance for this arrangement. Now, that being said, and Chris and I had this talk here a week or so ago. I want everybody to know that this area is fed by a 12,000 foot dead end water main. All the water supplying PFL and FedEx goes through a booster station. And if there is a water main break anywhere from this area to town, everyone in this area is going to be out of water. So, you know, I would love to be planning for a West End water loop. But the, the latest estimate for that has it approaching $3 million. It's going to be very important that as this subdivision develops, that, that water loop and redundancy occurs. And how we do that, I'm confident with Andrew's past history. There is a tax increment district out here, a TIF, that does have some money in it. We may reconsider expanding that boundary of the TIF to include the Justin property as, as development pressure occurs on that parcel. But certainly for this being zoned highway commercial, I'm very confident that working with Sanderson and Stewart to look at the hydraulic issues that we have at the booster station, we can overcome that. We do have sewer capacity issues downstream, primarily in the area where Kenyon Noble is at before it dumps into our collection main and Park Street. Those are other issues that we certainly can address through the design phase of this project. And while it might be on, might, might not be under the purview, but I, I am confident that, that Andrew and his team would, would assist the city with hopefully securing a public easement that's over the current water and sewer mains that supply water and sewer to PFL and FedEx. I think it would be a great option for pedestrian bicycle connectivity to this location that's separated from Highway 10. And I, I'd, I'd like to see that happen in, if, if this subdivision is approved ultimately. So I wouldn't have said this before the month of July that we just had. And I've always, Livingston's always had adequate water capacity. But what we experienced this July and even the first couple of weeks of August is, on average, we're, we're using anywhere from 4.3 to 4.7 million gallons per day. Our pumping capacity at our wells, six wells running 24 hours a day is, is 4.3 gallons. So we are dipping into our reserves that are in our 2 million and 1 million gallon reservoir. That is, that is certainly something that we're going to have to look at closer. But I'm confident that Andrew and his team will provide an updated water and sewer design report so we can actually put those calculations into our water model and sewer model and be able to, and be able to address any concerns we have with that. So that's all I have at this time. Thank you for letting me give everybody a little history on the infrastructure portion of this.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Jonathan, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, including what Shannon just touched on. When you're talking about that water loop potentially costing $3 million, who's going to be picking up the tab for that? Is that the, the city or the public? Or what's, what's the plan in the future for that?
So I think that's a great question, Jonathan. So obviously there's some money in the TIF for this. I think in the tune of about $400,000. And like Jim alluded to in the staff report, anytime, so when, when, if this subdivision's approved and these lots are purchased, before, before they get their building permit, they have to pay impact fees based on the meter size. So those impact fees go to water, sewer, police, fire, streets. And what, you know, that, the impact fees were updated in 2021. So they are, they're, they're in pretty good shape based on what the current cost for construction is. So it, it would be the impact fees, maybe a combination of the TIF. Or another option would be looking at Or another option would be looking at um. Putting a new boundary on this West End TIF and including the, the Jessen property and. And uh generating money specifically for uh this West End. Water loop or uh yet another option would be looking at, at, at bonding for that. At, at, at that high of a cost.
Thank you, and so if, if there's um. A TIF district, does, that means that a lot of that increased tax revenue from this won't end up going to the school in the city, right? It'll go to the TIF district.
It's exactly what, how the downtown tip, the setup and a lot of that money is, is generated and, and reinvested within the TIF boundary. For capital improvement projects, blight, um the programs that the URA has, yes.
Okay, and um, so and a lot of times, I guess with. Something like this, like sprawl like this, um is there, there's, it doesn't end up paying for itself in the long run, so if the impact fees. Cover it now, will, will, what, I mean, is this something that's going to be costing people thirty years down the road?
Well, I, I appreciate bringing that up and, and certainly it helps that our impact fee. Uh has been dramatically increased and um, so that helps a lot with these capacity expanding projects like. Water main extension, sewer main upsizing, um. Trail building, street building, et cetera, that, that meet the state requirements of, of what impact fees can be used for. Um. We should, if our rates are, if our rates for water, sewer. And street maintenance district and street lights, if those are set um correctly, uh it, it should pay for itself for the operation and maintenance. Of, of a development like this. Now, certainly that's where the design requirements come in that we have. And while we have a lot of infrastructure that's uh over a hundred years old in Livingston. Uh the maintenance for brand new infrastructure that's put in for our design. Standards accepted by us, tested, uh really. The, the maintenance is gonna be, you know, after thirty years of, of, of life. And if, if the impact fee structure is set up correctly. Uh there should be continued monies generated in that account to help for those uh issues into the future.
Have a question for Shannon.
Your question. Hold on one second, Jonathan still has the floor.
Okay.
Um, I had, I had two more questions, um but they aren't about this. I don't know if we want to just continue this discussion now.
Okay, Stacy, do you want to ask? Is it pertaining to what Shannon was just mentioning?
Um, it was one of the comments he made. Um, I wanted you to clarify Shannon about um. You mentioned a possible easement over the PFL's water and sewer. Is that in reference to the lines that were made when they? First went out there, so it was like the trail, you know, it looked like the trail was being built, but it's actually the. Sewer lanes, is that what you mean? Or are you thinking, are you saying, talking about something else?
Oh, Stacy, that's a great question. Um, so the city has a dedicated utility easement over the water and sewer mains that feed PFL.
Hmm.
Um. They are very clear that it is just for city maintenance only and not open to the general public. It's, it's an easement that's not open to the general pub. Like, it would be nice if we, if we could negotiate with that property owner. To actually come up with a way that that could be a public easement, even if it means fencing off or signing. To make sure people stay on the trail and, and aren't trespassing, but. Um, I certainly am supportive of separated trails over a trail that basically is along the shoulder of Highway ten uh for two.
Cause it's, it's a safety issue. Okay. Nope. Jesse, you're muted.
Sorry, here I am. Jonathan, um, did you have two more questions? Did you mention you wanted to ask?
Yes, uh Tori has his hand raised, though, so I didn't know if he was wanting to ask about this.
Tori, is, is your comment on the topic at hand?
If not, I'll let Jonathan finish, sorry Jonathan.
So um, I was wondering why this property is not included in the gateway uh overlay district?
Mr. Woodhall, do you have the answer to that? Yeah.
I believe so. The uh gateway overlay district was applied. Pretty sure after this was annexed. And at the time, the property had a different zoning designation of light industrial. And I don't believe uh the gateway was applied to those areas. It was only applied to the more commercial areas. Since then, what has it been? Andrew would probably know better than I. It's been at least three, maybe five years. Uh ago that this property was actually, the zoning was changed from light industrial to highway commercial.
And then um, the other question I had was. Um, in the letter from Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks, they um recommended. Bear um, bear cut precautions, basically, and I was just wondering if there's any plans for that at the property. And in the development.
Typically, what you're asking about, I think, is bear proof trash. Containers, is that correct?
Yes, that's what they recommend, yes.
Yeah, well, that, that's not that hard to accommodate at this point in most of, of the areas. Um, you know, the, the covered lid trash containers are bear proof there.
Okay, great. I would love to see that as a condition of approval, so um thank you, Jesse. I'm done with my questions for now.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Go ahead, Tori.
Uh, thanks Chair Will Cox. So I, this is, this is kind of a point of order question. Um, for the chair, uh so I, I have plenty of additional questions and perspectives. Uh on what we've seen so far, but I was thinking that I would hold them until. We get the additional information that we're requesting because that might answer some of my questions, so we'd. So I don't have to waste people's time with informa- with. Questions that might be answered um with the additional information. So I'm wondering, should I share those questions right now? Um, and, and those thoughts right now, or should I hold that until the next time we come back to this when we're provided with all the information?
You know, uh I think what my recommendation or what I would like to do, um and I'm not, and I guess I'm going to need a little bit of, of advice on how we move forward with this, but. You know, I think that if we have more specific questions that we wanted to have addressed now, we could do that. I also do think I'd like to open it up. I, we should, we should open this up to public comment before we make a vote on whether. Or, or if we have a motion to postpone this decision until we receive the information that I have. Uh kind of kept a list, list of and request Mr. Woodhall to provide a packet to the public. That contains the same information that we will be requesting and reviewing. Um, so I guess to your. Point, Tori, if, and the rest of the board, if there are things you really want to have addressed now. We can move forward with them. If, if this group wants to postpone. I'm, I'm unclear if we need a motion, but I'm pretty sure we probably do. And I'd also like to open it up to public comment since we have a number of people on the call this evening. Um, so I guess my question is, or so does anybody have any uh comments they wanted to, to have addressed now?
So just my, my input on, on what you just put out there. Um, I, I think it would make sense from my perspective to hold off on my comments and um until. I've gotten all the information that we're going to get from Mr. Woodhall and applicants. Um. The, I, I will, I will say that a lot of my, my questions and comments come from how this. Uh, how this development relates to the growth policy, which many of us are intimately familiar with. Um, that wasn't, you know, that's not part of the staff or, or the, the staff report that we saw. Um, and I would encourage either Mr. Woodhall or the applicant to take a stab at um. Uh addressing some of, some of the ways in which this, I, we did hear from um. From Mr. Field, his, his perspective um on some of the broader goals with respect to the growth policy, but I think that there. Are a number of elements that this touches on, um goals and strategies from the growth policy that I think um. It would be good to hear from either staff or from the applicant, the next time we, we come around to this. Um, what, what their thoughts are on that, because I, I certainly have plenty of my own, but I, I think that. I don't think it makes sense for me to, to go through that at this point when we're still waiting on outstanding information, but that's my perspective. Um, and so I will yield.
Any other board comments?
Just, did, did you get a response from MDT? Did I understand that there was a response that came in after you submitted everything? Already?
Madam Chair.
Dog duty.
I know, gosh, yes, sorry, go ahead.
There's a lot of hypothetical talking going on. I mean, do we actually need to have a vote to decide either way if we're postponing this or gonna have a decision? Tonight and continue discussions, and I do, do, I do agree about public comment, and I think. If, if ultimately it does get pushed till the next planning board meeting, um. We can cover a lot of bases and hopefully be able to be efficient with. The next meeting based on what our discussion tonight entails.
Okay, so we, so here I, um. We need a motion to postpone. The meeting, correct?
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
If, if that is the board's intention, I believe the, the motion should be to continue the hearing. To a date certain.
Okay. So our next board meeting is September twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, so I would suggest the motion entail that date. Do I, do I hear a motion from the board?
I'll make that motion, Jim, Eric.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
One second.
Uh, Misha, thank you. Okay, let's go through. Uh Jonathan.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yes.
Taya. Or Shannon. Or Jim Barrett.
Four.
Tori.
Four, four.
Misha.
Four.
And Jesse is four. Okay, great, thank you. We are going to postpone or continue, excuse me, we're going to continue. Uh this public hearing, September twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, what I'd like to do now, um with the help of the board, um is to read off some of the missing documents. That I'm hoping we can have included in the next packet, Mr. Woodhall, uh to be disseminated to both uh the board and the public. Um, through the website. Um, I have the wetland delineation report. I have uh Mr. Lyons' request for a variance for that subdivision. Uh regulation, uh the first subdivision regulation. Um, we need the response from MDT. Uh, we're looking for a topographical map, and I also thought an aerial map would be nice as well. Um. And there were some missing appendices and Taya, I'm not quite sure how, how many or which appendices were missing. I don't know if you have that list. Offhand or?
I don't have it offhand. I'm looking to see. If we had, so I know we had appendix, D, C, and F. So. The ones, the ones.
A, B, C.
Yeah, and if there's any beyond F.
Okay. Is there any other documentation from the board that we would request? Yes, Tori.
Uh, thank you for including what I had already said. I, I don't remember if there was, and I think that the, the. The planner on call here can answer this question for me. Um, the. I don't remember if there was a traffic impact study provided, was there?
Yes, there was.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then. I think that this is not necessarily required, but would be helpful if either Mr. Woodhall or the applicant. Would give some detailed information on their perspective of how. This proposal relates to the growth policy. That's, that's the perspective that I'm coming from, um and, and obviously I'm, this is not a requirement, but um. That would be helpful to hear their perspective on that.
And, and I don't know if this is included in the response from MDT, but. One of the questions I had was if a turn lane was ever in the response. Coming one way or the other off of Highway ten, in or out of.
Out of.
The area. Because that's a blind corner. You come around and.
Stacy.
Especially on, on the second one.
Madam Chairman, can I give a partial answer to that?
Yes, please.
Um, it was discussed with MDT and uh upon. Close examination of the traffic study, they did not require either turn lanes or signalization. Um, and what they did require, which the dirt has not been moved yet, but was a, a little bit of grade change. Right near that egress to improve the visibility and to make it not a blind corner.
Okay, I guess my, my question stems from the fact when I read the travel study. Um, I mean, that transportation, but the MDT report was that it referenced the fifth street crossing traffic counts. Which does not have. Significant amount of. Um, in other words, you're going to have increased traffic in and out of that area. Versus the fifth street crossing. And I didn't see any discussion on traffic flowing in and out. Maybe that's in the response that's coming.
Chris, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Andrew. Uh Stacy, the, the traffic analysis included in the application does. Uh quantify the amount of anticipated traffic. Trip, it's called trip generation. AM morning peak and PM afternoon peak counts and. Has some indication to the best that we can model which direction they'll be coming from and going to as they come to and leave the subdivision. So it's um, that information is in there. It's a, you know, def- it's a little bit, um, you know, a little bit wonky, but that was included, and then the impacts on uh Fifth Avenue, and I believe it was also the seventh. Um, intersection analysis that's in there was at the request of um Jim Woodall. He wanted to see. What the sub, how the subdivision would impact those intersections as you come into town.
Okay, it just wasn't very clear.
Okay, um, we, are there any other documents? J- there's an echo and Jonathan thinks it might be Jim Barrett's phone, and I've been trying to mute it.
Yeah, you did mute me a couple of times. Um, while I'm still not muted, could I make a?
Yes, of course, if you have something to say, please do.
Okay, I have a bad phone here. It's a, it's a landline. I'm on here, old timey stuff. Um. As you're, if you, if this is possible to add this in there. Um, as you're, if you, if this is possible to add this in there, um, now the idea that oftentimes some of these proposals of talk about affordable housing. Um, and then, uh, Chris Nauman mentioned that they're like between a half and an acre sized lot. Um, that's, those are pretty big lots for affordable housing, and maybe there could be some discussion about what exactly or whom would be able to afford lots, first of all, and then what kind of housing would be affordable for what type of, of worker. So if that could be added, that'd be great. If, if it's not appropriate, then I'll. But with that, if you wanna unmute me again, have at it.
Thank you, Jim. Um, you, you know, I had some question. We did have a public comment, um, about, uh, in support of this because of housing, specifically workforce housing. Um, but given that we don't know what's going to be developed, um, we, we have, um, it sounds like the desire to develop some housing, uh, I imagine PFL would like to devour, develop housing, and, and I think you've mentioned that for your own workforce and, and others, uh, as was mentioned, but at this point, we just don't know what would go there because that hasn't been specified. Um, so if, if, if the developers or the folks from PFL or, or Living West would like to address that at the next one, that would be great as well.
Can I throw something out regarding that?
Sure.
Clarifying the lot sizes, um, a lot, these half acre lots would be, you know, we've looked at six plexes and eight plexes that, um, are, you know, workforce, uh, type housing, and, um, we, we think that under 300,000, uh, is kind of the range that there's demand for. And you could fit, depending on which lot and how it's oriented, one or two, six or eight plexes on a lot. So it's, so it's not like for affordable, somebody has to buy a half acre, because what you do is you take that half acre and divide it by 12 to, um, 16 residences.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other documentation or requests from the board for our next meeting?
Chair, it's Taya.
Hi.
Hi. Um, I guess for the next meeting, some, some clarity, because it's starting to get a bit confusing. You know, I'm, I'm trying to stay focused in the mindset that this is a subdivision. We're, we're, we're splitting up, uh, real estate. Um, and so it's starting to get confusing when we talk about affordable housing, because then it does introduce the variance issue and alleyways. And so I think we need to be mindful or consider how we're going to approach this and how we're going to look at this. Are we looking at this as possible affordable housing? Are we looking at this as a straight subdivision? Um, that, that's, that's what I would like for us to consider for the next meeting. I yield.
Thanks, Taya.
Can I make one comment on that? This is Richard Smith.
Uh, sure.
You know, when you, when you come to alley, uh, layouts, typically that's for single family homes. It's not for multifamily, four plexes, eight plexes, six plexes, uh, because it, it's not, you know, it's normally designed to be a single family home, a garage in the back, and the, uh, access off the alley can go into the back of the property, which is normally a much smaller lot and not as dense of development. What we're looking typically for is to keep the cost down on that single family housing, uh, I mean, on housing for workforce that would allow more people to buy into it and live in the area than if they were all broken up as single family homes. The single family home model allows for, uh, alleys, but, you know, multifamily, it, it just doesn't work with alleys.
Okay, and we don't know what you're developing, and you don't know what you're developing, is sort of what I'm hearing and based on your narrative, so, um, so I'm not quite sure how to proceed with that, uh, conversation, other than, uh, do we need a variance? If you, you know, if, if in the proposal, if you change in the narrative and say, uh, we are actually planning to do some residential within this highway commercial, uh, zoning district, then perhaps that variance piece kicks in. But in your narrative, it, it says there are no plans, uh, no specific plans for development, other than what we're hearing today. So I don't know how to, I don't know where to take that, other than, um, maybe that's something we need to consider, um, as we, when we hear from, from the group next time. Um, so Tori, is your hand up, or is it just a lingering hand? Okay, is there any other? Is there any other documentation that this board wants? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to public comment. We are going to continue this hearing on September 21, 2022. We've given a list of requested documents that will be in the next board packet. Um, and we, you've also heard some of the board's, um, concerns, uh, for you to hopefully maybe come back, uh, next month. So I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Um, please state your name, your full name, your full address. We are the planning board and we allocate three minutes for public comment. Um, so I'm going to get my stopwatch out. And, um, if you have a public comment, please go forward and raise your hand. I think I can see raised hands now. If you have a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Oh, Patricia Graybow, are you clapping or raising your hand? Patricia, do you have a comment? Oh, you're giving me a thumbs up. Are there any public comments? If you can't figure out how to raise your hand, you can just unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Debbie.
Oh, yes, Debbie. Full name, please, and address.
Okay, Debbie Van Blakem, 1178 US Highway 10 West. I've lived here for since 90. And, um, I would like to address the traffic. Seeing it all, you know, for that many years, and it has become quite a problem. Uh, Seventh Street Signal helped that. And now if we're gonna have another four-way, then we go right back into our problem again. So I would like to see a roundabout where everybody has courtesy, and it is moving all the time for us that live here to be able to get out and be reassured that the yielding goes well with the roundabouts, I think, better than a stop sign. And as far as reducing the blind corner, I think that is, uh, unreasonable. I don't know how they're gonna do that. I pull out there every day and after he said that, I had visions of good luck. So that, and I'd like to say that, um, as far as the garbage from all these people, there, if you look, when you travel the Highway 10 to go out to our exit, there is numerous things hanging on the barbed wire fence from PFL and now from the construction of FedEx. And, um, my husband and grandson go down there with scissors and take off the huge plastics, because that's my biggest pet peeve, is seeing that flapping plastic. I know in town it bugs me, all the garbage, or the grocery bags in the trees. And so now, um, I do tend to that. So I'm hoping that when they leave their PFL way and take a right or left, and they see that garbage or in the barrel pit, whatever, you know, that they go back the next day, if not stop then, and say, and have somebody police it besides the Cub Scouts twice a year. And the last thing I have to say is, um, I have no idea that I would have the uh, noise and, uh, the disruption to my dogs. They are dog, um, people down there, which I am, so they bring their dogs to work every day. My dogs just wait until a car pulls up or some, you know, bark and bark in, and, um, I would like to suggest that I get a privacy fence put around my building by, I see that. This is the last thing I have to say. I would like PFL to get with FedEx and build me, uh, a privacy fence around my property so that I don't have that. I put up tarp's on my fence, so my dogs don't see. So that's all I have to say, and, um, thank you for letting me, uh, talk and the letter. So I will receive another letter for the next meeting. Is that correct?
Um, thank you for your comment. I'm not, I'll let you know that the next meeting is September 21, 2022. It's at 5:30 PM. It most likely will be by Zoom, but I'm not positive. The city is working on their hybrid model, and that is why we had to go completely Zoom today. Um.
Okay, so if I could just get that link, that'd be great.
Check the City of Livingston website. Sure. Okay, let's, let's move on to the second, uh, Mr. Schroder. I saw your hand up next. Full name, please, and, uh, address.
Frank Schroder, Board Chair of Friends of Park County. Our address is 477 Mill Creek Road in Prey. The fact that you've continued the discussion, I think was gonna, and you've got a three-minute, uh, limit, Madam Chair, tells me that we're gonna, uh, I will cut my testimony way back. And we really want, we have some very specific concerns about the decision-making process prior to, uh, the board's agreement to continue. And I think maybe we'd be best to send that to you and the board members with some specifics. We did want to say that we appreciate very much the contributions that Printing for Less and its founder have made to the, the local economy and the civic life of Livingston and Park County. So our testimony is in no way critical of either the corporation or the founder. Rather, we have a sign of respect with the testimony for city officials who have been entrusted with the responsibility to administer faithfully and impartially the city's land use regulations as well as Montana. So, um, we do have some specific issues, as I say, with the decision-making, and if it's all right with you, Madam Chair, we'll send that to you. Kind of soon, and then we'll probably have more when we have an opportunity to see the additional information that, uh, you will be presenting to the public, if that's, if that's a fair, um, comment. That, that process okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, let me clarify. So all public comment, uh, does not come directly to me. It goes to Faith Kinnick, uh, at the city, the city administrator and Jim, and/or Jim Woodhall, and the two of them will disseminate all public comment to the planning board members. And for those of you who are not familiar with the City of Livingston website, you can go, go under Boards, uh, oh, it's under Inside City Hall, and you'll see Planning Board documents, and then you can click on the date of our agenda of, of our meeting, and the agenda packet will pop up, and that's where you can get all the information. So yes, please send in your public comment.
We'll do that. Well, let me just conclude what, what we said. We, we thought the application raised three fundamental issues that, uh, we hope will be addressed in the future. The first is the adequacy of the factual information and legal analyses that the planning board and the city commission need in order to make the required findings of fact and conclusions of law. Obviously, not just in this case, but in every case. The second is the need to resolve some of the contradictions and unaddressed issues in the growth policy. Uh, we did comment this, uh, comment on this in May, 2021, to the city commission. The last is what we believe is an urgent need to translate the growth policy into internally consistent, effective regulations, programs, and incentives. And until, unless this is done, all of your, uh, your staffs and the community's work on the growth policy will be rendered meaningless as development proceeds without regard, regard to its, uh, growth policies, admirable goals and objectives. So with that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, next I saw, uh, Patricia Graybow, would you like to state your, your name, full name and, and address, please? Patricia, we can't hear you. Are you on mute? Oh. You know what, Patricia, I'm gonna come back to you. It looks like your audio is trying to connect, so I'm gonna move on to the next comment. Uh, and we'll come back to you. Uh, Mr. Blue Rock, I see your hand up. Would you like to state your full name and your address, please, and make your comment?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Tom Blue Rock. I live at, I live downtown Livingston at 122 South Second Street. And with Frank, I'm also a board member of the Friends of Park County. And I think we have some concerns, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more globally, maybe to preface some of the things we may be thinking about between now and the next meeting. But some of the, the Mountain View subdivision does have some implications with the growth policy, as Frank said. And it's interesting, because it's a piece of property that was sort, sort of set aside in 2004 as a little commercial island, about 100 acres, in fact, off on the west end of town, really disconnected from the city. And I think that has some implications. I'd also like to say, just in response to Richard Smith's comment, that there's a lot of different housing, including multifamily in the Livingston grid, which has alleys. And so the presence of alleys has, is, it does not preclude what you were talking about. It's not just for single family development, and I think what you were saying was very misleading. Anyway, that's not my point. I mean, the central theme of the, of the growth policy, really, I think we have all, we can all agree is, 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 is the prevention of urban sprawl, and in this case, it's a question of, of commercial sprawl. I think some of the thinking at, at the time of the Western entrance, sort of, it sort of ignored that when the growth policy was happening, and I think it's coming home to roost. But I'd like to put maybe a little numerical perspective on, on, on that. Outside of that 100 acres, there's probably about 400, there is about 400 acres of, of, of commercially developed land in the city of Livingston currently. And that sort of is the whole Park Street corridor, the, the downtown and sort of the entrance out to, out to Highway 89, about 400 acres. Everything happens there, and that's not fully developed. Um, I think just sort of looking at it from a windshield, you might be able to add 15 or 20% more space to that if you've redeveloped, underdeveloped spaces as, as, as the growth policy determines, it's, you could get even more. And I think one of the, one of the, one of the upsides of that is, do we really need to be zoning a lot more?
They won the game.
Okay. A lot, a lot more, uh, land to, to commercial development. Maybe the development of this island also could open up the development of, of the, of the area between, of the county land and the ETJ between it, which is about 300 acres. And something to think about is this would effectively double the, the, the Livingston footprint. It would probably, to commercial development, it probably, it would inevitably cause sprawl. And the numbers just are, are nasty. I also think that just in the, with, with what normally gets built, they're saying pleasant and nice. I've just never seen this kind of development be pleasant and nice. It looks more like 19th, 19th Street Bozeman than it does usually something pleasant and nice. So that's all, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Patricia, do you wanna try and make your public comment? We still can't hear you. Shoot. Patricia, do you think you can make your comment? Do you wanna try and call in? Okay, we can't hear Patricia. Um, are there any other public comments? I'm not seeing anyone's hands up. I just want to reiterate, if you, if you are unable to make your comment this evening, you are more than welcome to write in your comment to the city staff, Jim Woodhall. City staff, Jim Woodhall, or Faith Kinnick, written public comment. That comment will come to the full planning board. And if there's no other public comment. Last call for public comment. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. I want to just say thank you for everyone who's attended this evening. Mr. Fields and your colleagues, thank you so much for your time and your presentation. I also want to reiterate my appreciation for what PFL has done for the community. I appreciate the. The concern and the intention that you have around workforce housing. And I do recognize the need for more housing in Livingston. I also echo some of the comments that have been made about where this property is located in relation to the community. And I had just listened to last. Month's city commission meeting with this mixed use zoning versus highway commercial, and it it almost seems like that would have been a more appropriate, but I I'm not. I don't know. Anyway, we are going to move on to old business, but thank you all for attending, and you're more than welcome to stay. We're going to move into old business administrative comments. We have our public works update coming up next. So Shannon, do you want to give us an update real quick, please?
I don't have the energy to do it tonight. I'd like to do that on this September meeting, if at all possible.
Fair enough. Uh, Mr. Woodhall, do you have any planning updates?
I do not have anything prepared, Madam Chair, but again, I will endeavor to have that available in September.
Great, thank you. Any other final board comments? Okay, hearing none. We will continue this public hearing at our next meeting, September twenty one, twenty twenty two. Thank you very much for everyone's time this evening. I appreciate it, and we will adjourn our meeting at seven twenty two PM. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you all.